Seventeenth. As you may remember, this meeting will be recorded and may be broadcasted or rebroadcasted on Westford Cat. We will start as we always do. We are all here, so we don't have to do roll call. We'll start with open forum. Joe, you have anything to start?
Just that if anybody is here for 426 Littleton Road and you request to continue the discussion this evening to the July fifteenth meeting.
And just hopefully a familiar face to you, Vinny Florck there. You may recognize him. He was a shadow student one year, then a senior capstone student another year. We tried to dissuade him from this profession, but he's back for some limited summer help. So Vinny, thanks for coming back.
Thank you, Vinny.
Welcome back.
Yeah, welcome back.
Anybody from the board have anything for open forum?
Yeah, I do. Last meeting, we discussed some potential topics to consider for zoning bylaw changes. And at the time, I should, I kind of forgot about until thinking about it after the fact, but I'd like to suggest we look at some of the dimensional buffers, setbacks, and under, I think, section five dot four under Appendix C in our zoning bylaw, focusing on industrial A, but looking at all of the commercial business and industrial zones, especially when they are but residential zones. I want to make a comment, this obviously will not affect those parcels that are under our consideration already, but I think all of us, I know I was a little shocked by when we had the proposal before us last time, how little buffer was required between industrial A and residential, especially compared to some of the other business districts, commercial districts. So I'm not sure if we can do that tonight, but I'd like to make sure we have a discussion on our agenda for this and add it to the list of topics that we consider.
That's a good idea, well, makes sense. Anybody else have anything for open forum?
No.
No? Don't want? All right. All right, so we'll go right to our first general business item. We have a presentation from NIMCOG regarding Affordable Homes Act and/or priorities for the state relative to housing productions and affordability. Hi there.
Hi. Do you want me to?
Please.
Just confirming. Thank you. Hi.
What's up, Jenny?
Hey, I'm Jennifer Reed. I'm the executive director at NIMCOG, and I'm going to give you, I have a lot written down here, so I might be reading from this a little bit, but I was essentially asked to talk about the Affordable Homes Act. The reason I didn't provide you with specific materials is because, as you know, it is making its passage through, you know, the legislative process. So if I send you one thing, I don't want you to think that that's the thing, that word that will be, because obviously there are still more steps in the process. The most important thing I want to say is, first of all, congratulations to the town of Westford for complying with MBTA communities and having adopted the compliance zoning. I think that's a huge milestone, and I was very impressed with the process that you ran. And I think that the town is really an exemplary community, and actually one that would stand to significantly benefit from the Affordable Homes Act. So what I want to tell you about the act is that, there's a little bit about the background and history, then about sort of where it is right now. And I know that at least one of you had submitted questions in advance, so I'll answer some of those questions, but of course, welcome all of the other questions that you might have, and others to follow up. So the background is that, you know, first of all, this is the most significant in terms of funding and size and magnitude of a proposal for a housing bond bill that many people have ever seen, you know, in the history of housing bond bills, let's just say, because back when Baker was our governor, he actually issued and we passed a very significant housing bond bill, but it was only over a billion dollars. This was, when first filed in October by Maura Healey, it was actually about $4.2 billion. And it's a combination of, you know, very comprehensive spending package with a lot of capital authorizations, but also it included, at the time, in October of last year, about 28 substantive policy changes. And they weren't all, you know, while there's been a lot of focus on some of the zoning policy ideas, there's also actually been other types of policy changes that relate to the how state programs work, how state agencies can expedite their processes, whether through applications, or procurement, or a lot of other things, you know, essentially policy changes that are about efficiencies, but also about production. And then additionally, there were three executive orders, which were mostly aimed at commissions. And one of those commissions is called the Unlocking Housing Production Commission, which I happen to serve on, so I just wanted to be fully transparent about that. Another one of the groups that was formed was the Housing Advisory Council, and that council is actually charged with, for the first time ever, creating a five-year statewide housing plan. And that could also be, you know, of significant impact to both just, you know, Westford, of course, but also to the region and statewide, because at the end of that process, there will be a series of recommended production targets for each region. Now, I don't know exactly what the regions will look like, so I can't promise anything right now. I will say that they've conducted a number of listening sessions. The plan itself is going through sort of the data stage, and engagement period is coming in the future around strategies and recommendations to move things forward. They also had two targeted tax credits that were part of that, the initial filing of the Affordable Homes Act. So a lot of it was around, of course, the fact that we are very far behind in terms of production in the state on housing, affordable housing, all different kinds of housing. And so the whole point of the bill is really to not just infuse the state with funding, which of course is necessary, but also get at the things that are sometimes in the way or hindering the progress of production. Five years sounds like a long time, but I think we all know that it goes by pretty quickly. And in the world of development, five years, most of the time, is not very long when it comes to actually seeing results happen. So Governor Healey's initial proposal, when she filed the bill, was to really stimulate housing production and growth. And essentially, it went through, you know, the Joint Committee on Housing, of course, and co-chaired by Rep. Garcia here, based in Westford, but it also has had, you know, other readings and reviews, but it left the House, and when it was voted on 145 to 13 on June 5th, it actually left with more money and a little less policy. So I'll tell you a little bit about that. So currently, where it stands is the bond authorization as proposed is now at $6.5 billion. Okay, so the authorization went up primarily for two or a few reasons. The first of them is, one of those barriers to production, as we all, you know, talk about, is infrastructure. And so one of the additions is $1 billion that would go towards the expansion of the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority to communities on the North and South shores. In the past, in the last few years, the MWRA has conducted numerous studies about expansion opportunities and possible areas actually surrounding those expansion zones. Some of those areas actually relate to the NIMCOG region, but it's primarily focused on the North and South Shore communities, which does not actually relate to our region. However, in 2023, they conducted a study to do the expansion in Metro West, and technically, even though that sounds like we're not in Framingham, Metro West region actually covers pretty much all of 495 and a little bit beyond. And so that's where you head into, like, Westford and Chelmsford and some of our other communities. However, that was not, that was actually not the part that was included in the bill. The authorization for the bond of $1 billion that was added on to the original authorization would be for the expansion only to the North and South Shore communities, so it doesn't actually relate to Westford or Chelmsford in this particular case. So it's not included in the House version of the bill. Again, it's a bill in progress, so I don't want you to, you know, hang anything too, hang on to that too tightly. So it could be put back in, it could be included, and something else could be cut. The bill also added $500 million in funding to help with modernization of state public housing. So now the total amount is $2 billion for state-aided housing, and so that obviously would apply to Westford. Westford currently benefits by being part of the regional capital assistance team, which is housed in Chelmsford through the Chelmsford Housing Authority. And so those funds would actually, if it happens, and if it passes and is signed by the governor, those funds could potentially provide a pretty significant infusion to your state-aided housing inventory, the elderly and all of the portfolio. Additionally, there is another $150 million that was added by the House for decarbonization of state-aided public housing. What that means is basically taking, you know, things like, you know, oil, gas burners, weatherization, all of those types of things, or anything, any opportunity to electrify or change, switch off from gas or oil or, you know, other types of things that basically would work against the state's climate goals. So everything is about decarbonization. And a lot of the plan itself in the bill is about meeting the state's not just housing and economic development goals, but also about climate resiliency goals that the state has put forth. And if you're not familiar with those goals, there's something called Resilient Mass, which is a website that I would encourage you or anybody else listening to take a look at. It's an extremely comprehensive site, and it actually gets into some of the details around climate funding and what the state is trying to do to address issues of building decarbonization, and specifically with a focus on multifamily housing and public housing. Additionally, the last element of the authorization that increased was $150 million to facilitate the conversion of commercial spaces into housing, and that, I would say, is another area which could be potentially beneficial to the town, where you might be working with a developer, or you might have your own opportunity as a municipality to convert some sort of former, some other former use into housing, basically, you know, to stimulate adaptive reuse, which can be challenging for all the reasons that you likely know, but they include everything from, you know, mitigation and cleanup to just trying to retrofit, you know, challenging spaces into a home. So following the House Ways and Means release of the bill, there were actually about 374 amendments that were filed to the bill that was released, and they've actually been put out as, like, sort of consolidated amendments. I think there's three tranches of those amendments. Some of them had been adopted, some were rejected, and many of them actually ended up being withdrawn because they were filed by some of the same legislators. So what's going to happen next? Basically, the House now sends this version of the bill to the Senate Committee on Ways and Means, and we anticipate that the review of the legislation and the draft of their own proposal will be happening in the coming weeks. The legislative session, as you may know, ends at the end of July, so it's kind of a robust, busy process, but it is somewhat at a committee level, so I, this is the amount of detail that I have at this particular time. And much could happen, of course, with further debate on the Senate floor, where there could be, you know, senators filing their own amendments before debating ultimately and then voting on the bill, and then, of course, making its path towards the governor's desk. So there's a lot of differences between the governor's proposal, the House Ways and Means proposal, and the final House version. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about several of the policy measures now that were included in the bill, because that was basically just sort of the overview of the big amounts of money that ended up being included in the additional bill that was just released. So the first of them, of course, is accessory dwelling units by right, because that's the thing that most people want to know about. I know I should have started there, but I just kept you, kept you waiting. But I will say that, you know, the bill includes the same language from the original, the Affordable Homes Act, as it had been filed by the governor, with a couple of exceptions. The first of them is that for any additional accessory dwelling unit as part of any lot, that second accessory dwelling unit would have to go through a special permitting process. It could not be just another ADU by right. The second change that is, you know, relevant and important to understand is that ADUs in general would have to meet some sort of reasonable requirement, so it's not just by right. They also have, you know, there's sort of the reasonability standard that you probably go through with other types of by-right uses, whether it's through the Dover Amendment or other things that you might do by right. There's some level of administrative review, site plan review, but also compliance with water and sewer regulations, dimensional and setback requirements. There cannot be any restrictions, though, or prohibitions on accessory dwelling units in relationship to owner occupancy, but you could have some protections related to short-term rental units, which a lot of communities do have. Additionally, there are parking requirements that sometimes come with a lot of accessory dwelling units in communities, but you can't have, you cannot require more than one parking unit per ADU as part of this particular bill. And any ADUs that are permitted or that get built within a half mile of transit are not allowed to have any required parking at all. So that's basically the language, and I'm glad to explain it further, but the by-right part is by-right in single-family residential districts and lots, okay, only. We're not talking accessory dwelling units in just any parcel of land, but specifically related to single-family zones. I will note that after, one of my first tasks actually when I came to NIMCOG was to do your housing production plan and complete that with you, and I went back and I actually took a look at it again and noted that your housing production plan has a priority strategy to, which noted that you were thinking about at that time revising your bylaw to simplify it and streamline the permitting of the ADUs, including the evaluation of ADUs by right and/or adjustments to allow more ADUs. So maybe it's worth, you know, if you are thinking about these things in the future, if this doesn't pass, you continue to work on that goal, because it's still, you know, a worthwhile goal. And in terms of what the magnitude might be in terms of production, it's relatively small compared to the other production that's anticipated from the five-year, $6.5 billion authorization. It's projected to potentially produce 8,000 units statewide over five years. The other thing that was added to the bill is something called the Tenant Opportunity to Purchase Act and/or tenants' right of first refusal. This essentially allows tenants who may be involved in some sort of transition, they're living at a property, their property owner might be in the process of maybe transferring the property, or something that could potentially displace renters who are currently living there and may not be protected by a lease. The tenants would have the right to organize under this proposal, under the language that's proposed. They could potentially organize and try to purchase the property from the buyer. They would have the first right of first refusal in order to do that in a certain, you know, time-limited amount of, you know, from the date that they're notified in order to move forward and ultimately have the right to purchase the property from the landlord. Sometimes this actually happens just in practice because of community-based organizations assisting tenants, but this would enable tenants to be able to do that independently on their own and provide them with the resources that they might need in order to do so. A couple of other things. There's also an Office of Fair Housing that is being proposed. This would live within the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities and help to ensure that communities across the state are compliant with fair housing laws. Now then, I mentioned the MWR expansion and also surplus land disposition reform. I thought this might be of interest to the town. This also included language in this particular bill that was issued, prioritizing housing uses. That had actually, you know, been something that had been talked about originally and is now brought back again, and particularly to encourage that any state land would be surplused or anything by a public agency that would absolutely center and focus on affordable housing as the first use being explored. There's also a flexible funding pool for to be able to encourage supportive housing, which I also know is important to the town of Westford. And then the things that were, one last thing to note is what was removed from the original policy proposals. I mentioned there were 28, now there's 25. Here's the, here's the three that got cut. The first one is the local option transfer fee. This is a real estate transfer fee, and it is exactly that, an optional thing that a city or town could adopt. Right now, no city or town can adopt real estate transfer fees without going through a home rule petition. About 18 communities filed, have filed or have currently in, you know, awaiting a hearing or some sort of movement, bills to have their own local transfer fees, because it's not allowed, you know, under state law. So this would simply allow, you know, enable it, and you'd have the option to adopt your own through your legislative process locally, which is town meeting, of course.
Is there a suggested amount, percentage, or a flat rate?
So this was removed from the current bill.
Removed, okay.
Yeah, but in the original proposal, it would have been a, potentially between the buyer and the seller, you know, sort of a transactional charge above $1 million. So that was the, that ended up becoming, you know, just one, not the only one, but one of the sticking points is the amount and whether or not that was applicable across the state, because not every community is like those in certain places where there's a very high value of land and property and transactions. So there was some concern about how that might be handled. In reality, the way that the original bill was filed was such that you would actually, your select board would be the entity, in this case, with the town of Westford, your select board would actually be the entity that would be able to decide the threshold, the percentage, buyer versus seller, and the dollar amount. So we'll see if that flexibility and that option even gets back into anything that's final. The other thing that was eliminated from the policy proposal sweep was the inclusionary zoning by simple majority. This would have allowed communities to do just that, adopt any inclusionary zoning bylaw or any bylaw that might include, you know, might be about like a district but include inclusionary language. That would have been allowed as a simple majority vote, but unfortunately, that was not put into the bill that was currently released. And I will note, and that one as well, ties back to your housing production plan, Strategy One, which was an evaluation of your inclusionary zoning levels to ensure consistency across development types. And currently, you have the OSRD, you have your flexible development, zoning, mill development, and senior residential, and maybe looking at a typology where you have more consistency across that. So again, even if you don't, even if that doesn't live in the final product or whatever bill is signed by the governor, I would encourage you to keep working on that one. And then lastly, the other policy that was eliminated was eviction sealing, meaning that anybody who had suffered through an eviction of housing, that their records would be sealed so that it would not potentially penalize them in the event that they wanted to access new housing opportunities. And that was removed from the bill that is most recently released. So the questions that you had, I think I may have answered the local option transfer fee question. With regard to public housing, the question was about allowing local housing authorities to borrow against capital and how, how they access that capital and how it gets paid back. It would be any future capital, and the capital is basically, your housing authority receives a modest amount of funds through the state, through operating and otherwise, so it could be borrowed against anything that's in their capital stack, which could also include local funds. I didn't see that in their current capital plan, but it could be part of, you know, any CPA funds could be included in the capital stack, et cetera. And essentially, it would be, you know, to make debt service payments for, you know, any, any sort of bond or, you know, in lieu of a conventional, you know, sort of funding source. So that's the idea behind the authorization. Just a more flexible resource, basically, to produce housing, to borrow against those from the future debt. Transferring the affordable housing restriction to a new property, I wasn't really sure what that question was about, so I wanted to ask you to.
Okay, so. So when I was reading that, to me, it says that we have a piece of property with an affordable housing restriction, and if it's advantageous to take that authority and move it to another parcel or another set of property, it could be done, even though there's a deed restriction, so I guess the deed restriction would be rewritten somehow. My question was, who would be the approval authority? Would it be at the state level, or would it be something the town would have something to say in?
Well, I think it would go through your typical, you know, any, working with any council here, special counsel or town council first, and then it would have to be approved by HL, the Housing and Livable Communities Executive Office.
Okay, so wouldn't, it's not a by-right thing, or they could just?
No, it would have to go through your same, your legal approval process, possibly your select board, I guess, as well.
Okay, thank you.
And then on the last question about, very good one, about workforce housing and homeowner production and the need to address sort of young families, people who are struggling to purchase their first home. There are actually two different opportunities that are currently in the bill. The first is something called the Momentum Fund. This would be a fund that would be at mass housing. It's currently, as a starting point, it's $250 million in the bill, and this would produce mixed income and workforce multifamily housing and be targeted to people who make between 60% to 120% area median income. So that's kind of in that range of, you know, somewhere between moderate income and, you know, above 80% is considered workforce. And then the Smart Growth Housing Trust Fund, which is very small, but it's $20 million, and that is for affordable homeownership, and also up to 120% of the area median income. So those are the.
Those are the couple of things. So those are funds that a homeowner, or a someone who's trying to become a homeowner could try to access, if they're within those income limits?
Yes, but also it's really aimed at, most of these capital authorizations are for developers who are trying to build something and need the infusion of cash or capital in order to build it to that, you know, for that particular program. So in this case, it would be a developer who's creating affordable homeownership opportunities for people who are earning between 60% to 120% of the area median income, not something direct to the person who might be moving in, who might, who would be income-eligible. That might be another program, though. So you could actually layer, you know, different subsidy programs. So it's like, of course, there's the funding that goes towards the developer, and then there's something that could go towards the consumer who needs help with down payment or some other, first-time homebuyer assistance. There's many ways to layer that.
Within these.
Within these programs.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks so much.
Yep. Leave that covered, your questions, and I think everything that I had to say about, that was everything that I had to say.
Well, why don't we go to the board, if there's any specific questions? We can certainly see if the audience has any, but, Bob, do you have any things, any questions you'd like to add?
No, I think she addressed the one I'm concerned about, which was the accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah, no, great presentation.
Don?
No, same. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Yeah, Jenny, just on the, to your final point there about kind of the programs to make the developers kind of whole.
Yes.
So is the idea there that if there are, let's say, 100 units in a building, 10 are affordable, and the, you know, they charge half of the rent that they would charge at market rate, does the developer get that other 50% from the state to make them whole in that case? Is that kind of how that would work?
Potentially, you know, maybe not 10 units, probably more, more than that. But yes, it's still, it just goes to the overall development, the total development cost, yes. But it just means that there are a certain number of units that would have a deed restriction, even if they're own, you know, homeownership properties, they can still have a deed restriction, so.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jeff, Joe, Vinny, any questions? Anybody from the audience?
I was gonna say, the only question I would have is, so you mentioned the, and the legislation session is July, so we're probably just going to come up right up to the deadline, and then, out from there?
2:00 AM, July, or August 1st. Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it'll be right up to the deadline, I'm sure. So, yes.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Very welcome.
Very formidable. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you for answering all my questions.
Okay, we have one public hearing on the docket tonight, PB 2409 426 Littleton Road. The applicant has asked that this be continued. Did they mention a date, Joe?
The July meeting, July 15th.
The July 15th meeting?
Yep.
So is there a motion to continue the PB 2409 426 Littleton Road to 15th of July in this office at 7:00?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on to our first general bill, general business item continued, PB 2416, zero parcel C, Texas Road. It's an application for an A and R. Jeff, Joe would like to speak to this.
Sure. What you have in your packet is an approval-not-required plan. We did review this. In our opinion, it does not constitute a subdivision, therefore it would be titled to endorsement. I think in simplest terms, there's an existing parcel, a non-billable lot, I believe, that straddles the town line, and this proposal would simply have the town line serve as a new boundary for that parcel, make it into two separate parcels. So if you have further questions about that, we might be able to get them answered for you.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
No, just in the drawing of this, Jeff and Joe, it says parcel B1.
Yes.
And it was a.
That's an acting parcel number. So right now, the piece is identified.
Just so you can be recorded, if you'd speak up to the microphone, and just identify yourself, please.
Hi, my name is Ed Kennedy, the property owner here. What it is. What it is, is a, the map where it's made off of is, is an Acton parcel. So that's that, that B. B parcel. And basically, what we're doing is, is it's family land, and we've purchased some property from them that was already on, subdivided, or not subdivided, but parcelized in Westford, and this was a one, one piece left that was, we didn't have along that border. And we're, basically, we're just trying to divide it off from the Acton piece so we can own along that border in Westford there.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions, anybody?
Nope.
The only other question I had is, it looks like the adjoining parcel has the same issue, predominantly in Westford with a small piece over here on the right-hand side, coming into Acton, but, oh, right there, is that, is that?
Am I mistaken?
Yeah. That's a what? That's a separate, so.
That's a separate one with the same, same issue.
It's not. That one's actually a separate part. So if you look at it on the tax map as opposed to the deed map, it's different. And that parcel there is Westford, that's the piece I bought already.
Okay.
And this piece right here on the actual deed map is a separate piece. This is, that, this little triangle, if you will, is a, is on a parcel, 17B, I believe, in Acton, and basically, I want to make it so it's, I have that contiguous line across.
Okay. All right. I'm fine, yeah.
Oh, is there a motion?
There's a question.
This is a public hearing, but please come up if you have a question.
Is it a public hearing?
It's not a public.
No, it's not a public hearing.
Okay, well, Emily Teller, 9 Texas Road. I didn't know anything about this parcel until arriving here, and I looked it up quickly, and it looks like it was sold in 2022 to an entity called RMBDN LLC for $625,000.
Is this relevant, though? This is an A&R request, so.
Well, okay, my, I guess my question, can I ask what the intention is? Is there going to be development or anything?
Nope.
An A&R.
It's an A&R.
Okay. I know about A&R.
I'll answer your question, though.
Thank you.
We just, we own a significant portion of land there, and we're just trying to clean up the lines on it.
Okay.
All right. So back, is there a motion to approve the A&R request with the note that, with the, knowing, what do we say, no?
No determination as.
No determination for zoning.
Tenor.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We just want to be careful that you sign the right endorsement block, because there's spots for both Acton and Westford.
Okay.
That would be bad. Thank you.
You've got to get Acton to sign it again.
They'll sign it after tonight, and we can.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, our third general business item, concept plan review and preliminary discussion for project at 219 Littleton Road under the new MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District of the zoning bylaw. I will note that this is a concept plan review. This is just a review of what they may potentially want to bring forward at some point. Jeff, do you want to elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've received a few comments and questions since the agenda got posted. So just as a brief reminder, as you know, town meeting did approve a zoning bylaw amendment to try to bring us into compliance with the MBTA requirements under Section 3A of the Zoning Act. And following town meeting, we did submit the amendment to both the attorney general's office as well as the executive office of Housing and Livable Communities. Both of those reviews are underway, and they are scheduled to complete the reviews by sometime in August. So tonight is really just a non-binding discussion with a prospective applicant about a conceptual proposal that you mentioned. And we think, as we premeditated, this language is in the, the bylaw being reviewed, we really think it's in everyone's best interest to have these kinds of conversations as early as possible, at a time when the applicants have the greatest flexibility before they've spent, you know, a lot of time, energy, and money, you know, doing layout and design. It's also the greatest opportunity, we feel, for the planning board and the public to provide comments to really help shape the project positively. You know, the earlier you can do that, I think you can give a better result. So just want everyone to keep in mind, these plans are conceptual, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair. They are not with benefit of detailed engineering, so if you're asking questions about curbing or snow storage, you're not going to find it there tonight, okay? So they're really seeking some honest feedback and direction from the board, and in particular, you know, with benefit of public input, what might you be open to, what might you be open to under certain circumstances, and just what is not acceptable to you, what will you, won't you consider? So I think that information would be very helpful to them, and I just want to suggest there's a lot of issues in play here. Mostly, everything is not nearly as simple as you might think it is. It's, it's complicated, it relates to a lot of other issues, and I hope that this process, this is the first of what will be at least several, I hope this is as educational for the board and staff and the applicant and the public as well, because we're all going to be learning this and going through this together. So I hope everyone keeps an open mind, and we just go through this together. So thank you very much.
And having said that, this isn't a public hearing, but I think we'll be, we will entertain some questions from the audience if they come up. But please, do yourselves and let us know what we got.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, and members of the board, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Liz Bejo, I'm with Red Gate, and as Jeff mentioned, we're going to be discussing 219 Littleton Road, the Westford Regency Hotel. And we requested this pre-application review meeting.
Speak up a little bit, I don't think they're trouble hearing you. And that mic isn't just for the television, so you have to speak up to the audience.
And we requested this pre-application review meeting to really review the concepts that we are contemplating at this point, and we're also requesting just some preliminary feedback from you on some waivers that we would also be considering for those options. I'm joined by David Boyes with Arrow Street Architects. He's going to be taking you through the slides that we're going to be presenting tonight. But we are very excited to be here. We think this site is great for residential use. It's right next to the Cornerstone Square Mall, it's got great amenities there, we could see people just being able to walk over, it's got the bust up right in front. And we really just wanted to applaud also, just echoing some of the prior comments earlier, just all the thoughtful work that the town did, including community engagement through the MBTA Communities process, because that community input also influenced a plan that we're going to be presenting tonight. For context, I, as, as Jeff was mentioning, I do want to offer where we are right now. We have an agreement with the landowner, and we're in our due diligence phase, which runs through the end of this month. And so we're really assessing the viability of the project. And typically, before we go to a public meeting, we like to be much more progressed from a design standpoint before presenting to the public, but we also think that the opportunity that the zoning allows to be able to solicit this type of early input is invaluable, especially as we're vetting all these options. So I think with that said, I wanted to just offer some high-level context of some of the constraints that we found to date through our due diligence. I think at simple glance, when you look at the site, and we'll go into detail, but you'll be able to see that the western, southwestern portion of the site is really all wet, it's all wetlands. Through our due diligence, we also uncovered that there's a vernal pool towards the, yes, someone is pointing, that's great. And also, there's, in addition to that, there's a vernal pool off-site on the Cornerstone Square Mall as well, which needs to be accounted for in our analysis for wastewater capacity for the site. So that leads me to the second constraint, which is the wastewater capacity. And I think right now, it just became a real challenge to just lay out the buildings in a way that don't impact the wetlands, but that also maximize the units, which is really being driven by how much wastewater can be held on site, which is, ultimately, we're going to end up reusing the existing leaching fields, and then we may be adding a small area towards the northeast. I apologize, I'm stealing your thunder.
No, no, it's fine.
But working with Arrow Street, you know, they've come up with numerous iterations of thoughtful plans to lay out these buildings in light of these constraints, and we think that the plans that we're going to be presenting tonight really speak to the purposes that were outlined in the zoning overlay, and to some of the community priorities that we heard through the public process, including those broader options for housing, including age-restricted living and single-level living, sustainability and open space. So with that, I'll turn it over to David.
Thank you. As Liz said, I'm David Boyes, principal at Arrow Street. We are architects, not civil engineers. However, at this early phase, we think it's important to really work on these early planning concepts from an architectural perspective, not just from a civil perspective. So while we don't have architecture, because that's something that we develop over time when we really understand the site at a high level, and we understand the community's needs, and we will develop an architectural style at that point. What we did do was some preliminary plans that thought about the spaces, thought about how to best use the site, and as Liz showed, you know, there are a number of constraints on the site that we had to be aware of. So we have worked with civil a little bit and with the wastewater engineer to understand those and understand how that impacts our design. Our first plan is one that tries to think about, from dimensional constraints, if we were to go with the current zoning, the proposed new zoning and not ask for any waivers, what would that mean? So it's a 75-foot setback along Littleton Road. It's four stories maximum, these are sort of high level, there's a lot of other, you know, 50-foot setback in the back, 25 feet at the sides, one and a half parking spaces per unit, and that's what this plan represents. You can see, Bill, and I should also say that neither building can be bigger than 150 units. The site itself, at 20-plus acres, you know, would support the 300 units that we're showing here within the zoning. And what it results in is a fairly long building for Building A, because Building B is a little bit more constrained. And the way that we're dealing with this is, we would actually have more of the larger units in Building A, the smaller units in Building B, that's why they don't look exactly the same in terms of size. We have been thinking about age-restricted units and how that might work and how this whole place might actually be a place. So what you see are a bunch of, in Building B is a bunch of walk-ups where it says drop off, you can see stoops, you can see what would be active, active streets in that area. One of the things that happens with this scheme is that the parking gets fairly spread around because of the other constraints, the vernal pool, the wetlands. We are cognizant that we don't want to go beyond the current pavement lines, and, but in this particular scheme, we're sticking right up against those. We, we don't really have the luxury of cutting back to, to make the, the parking numbers work. So from an pervious to impervious, this scheme is almost exactly the same as the current site. Current site looks a little bit different, but it has a lot of big islands in some of the parking fields. This is a little bit tighter in the parking, because as much as possible, we want to, we want to shrink the parking areas and make them efficient, meet the landscaping requirements that you have, but not have a lot of extra spread-out roads. So the tighter we can keep it, the less pavement we can have.
You can go to the next slide.
Just kind of looking at those public benefits of, of this particular, particular site, as we said, the single-level living, those walk-up units around the perimeter of the base of the building, sustainability, all of our projects are, these days are all electric. We would be studying passive house. We do passive house both for, you know, for any of our market-rate housing, we study that as an opportunity to provide very highly efficient units for the residents so that their, their operating costs go down. And we've found that there are ways to do this that are relatively cost-effective. Solar-ready roofs, and, you know, would be built to lead standards. The pedestrian improvements, Liz touched on this, we would obviously want to enhance those connections to the nearby retail. In addition, though, we think that there's an opportunity, and we have a lot more study to do with this, but we think there's an opportunity to create a trail network into the wetlands. We'd have to work with the town to figure out how to do that, but there's, you know, about half the site is the wetlands, and it's a great amenity, and we'd love to be able to connect to other trail networks. Because so much of the site is wetlands and needs to be protected and these plans do that, we're at about 63% open space for this plan, which is very similar to what the current site is. Our second option is similar but a little bit different. We actually were able to, let me back up. The one waiver we're looking for here is, from a dimensional perspective, is to take advantage of that, reducing the setback along Littleton Road by half. So it's a 37 and a half foot setback there. What that does is it gives us a little bit more space for Building B. Building B gets a little smaller, too, because we're going to take 14 units out of that building and put them into the townhome units. It's a mix of one- and two-story units. All of those units would be the age-restricted units, they would all have ground floor, single-level living. The middle units in the bar would be two-story to get a little bit more height, but it kind of a lofted space and a second bedroom upstairs. The end units that, on, on each of these bars would be two-bedroom units, all on one level. All units here have garages with one parking space and a driveway. In addition to that, we still think that the idea of having the stoops along, we're calling Building A at the moment, would be a good idea, again, age-restricted units, with the understanding that some people actually may like the convenience of actually going through their second door into a corridor to the amenities that would be in that larger building. This, this particular option actually reduces the pervious area on the site by about a half an acre. And again, these are preliminary numbers, we have a lot of layout and engineering to do, but we think that because we've been able to reduce some of the paving, especially around the edges, at the edges of the wetlands, that we've been able to reduce that pervious area in this case. So, you know, a lot of the benefits are similar, the big changes here are really the different typologies of housing that this site, this particular plan offers versus the other one, and the reduction in the pervious areas. And we did take a look at the goals, you know, of the, the new zoning, and tried to sort of understand how this, this plan would actually address those goals and, and meet them.
So we're really just requesting your input on these options. Our preference would be option two with the townhomes. We think that it really speaks more to the feedback that we've heard and came up through the community process. But in that option, we would be seeking that front setback waiver that they've been mentioning, and then the affordable housing, because from an underwriting standpoint, it is very difficult to underwrite 10% affordable in that option. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, we'll go to the board. Well, thank you very much. Start with Bob.
Okay, the first thing I want to bring up, because it was totally ignored, the existing farmhouse on that property, we're very sensitive in this town to historical preservation, and that wasn't even addressed. I'm, would love to see that preserved, less townhomes, and have that converted to some housing, because that also defines the character of that property today. And I think that was something that the hotel did well, was to save that farmhouse. So that is definitely going to be addressed, huh?
I think they were required to save that farmhouse.
They, they were strongly encouraged, yes. So that, that is first and foremost. Regarding the, the buffer, as you said, along Littleton Road, I'm okay with. the, the buffer, as you said, along Littleton Road, I'm okay with what you have for Building B, but you have very, very little buffer with the parking lot. And my suggestion would be to look at the design standards under the Route 110 Master Plan. Definitely want to look at how that is buffered from Littleton Road. I don't think there's much elevation change there, so it's going to be very visible. There's other areas where, for example, with Cornerstone, they use the stone walls to provide that kind of a visual buffer. So that's going to be very important for us to even consider. One of the things I like, is I like you have the drop-off zone for Building A, but I don't see it for Building B. And I think that's going to be necessary for a building that large, people dropping somebody off in the weather. They're going to stop there whether you have a drop-off zone or, or not, and that creates a safety hazard, especially where you have a fairly narrow entry road in there. So I think a drop-off area for both buildings is very important. One caution, looking at the wetlands, especially the vernal pool, I think this is really important that you bring this before the Conservation Commission. There's not much we can offer here. They're probably going to have some pretty strong opinions about what they like and what they don't like. I'm a little concerned about how close that vernal pool is with seemingly a lack of, of buffer zone to that building. And I know that that was what was considered developable before. That may not be what's considered developable now for a new development. So I think that's going to be very important. I can't tell from the scale on this particular rendition, the turnaround circle for the townhomes, just pay attention to that. Pay attention also to the turning radiuses on that T-intersection coming in up into Building A. Our fire department is very, very strict and specific about turning radiuses for their fire apparatus. And so I would make sure I understood those parameters very early on, because that's going to really drive the whole layout for your development. I, I like, for the most part, the way you've got the parking separated from the main road, with the one exception down by the vernal pool. You do have parking spaces turning out into that main aisle. So learning the lessons from Cornerstone, I'm very sensitive to cars pulling out into main roadways. And especially right there, you might find, you might discover that fire is, is sensitive about that area, because that is the one area that provides access to the rear of the building and the vernal pool area. And they're probably going to want to have some way to get their apparatus back down into that inner corner of the building. So there's probably going to be some enhancements on that grass surface. If it's not paved, they'll want to have it be reinforced. So, and as far as affordable housing goes, I think we have to talk in negotiations here. I'm a little hesitant to just give up 10%, because this is adding upwards of 300 units to our, our pool. So that significantly dilutes our goal for maintaining the 10%. We've, we've done a lot of work over 20-plus years to achieve the affordable housing pool we have. And I don't want to see it diluted by such a, a large development. So I think we need to talk about how, what, what, what we would get in return, if that's the case. And my very last point, you kind of addressed it. I'd like to see pedestrian connectivity into Cornerstone. You hinted at some additional services within Building A. You know, this, we could talk mixed-use. I'm not as hard-set on this with this development, because it's so close to Cornerstone. You've got access to a lot of different services there. So I think with good pedestrian connectivity up in the middle of the site, not dependent upon the sidewalks on Littleton Road, I think that would be important. I think if you don't provide it, they're still going to make it happen. People are going to trample over something and create it. So I'd like to see it designed in, so it was designed in safely, with lighting, with safe, walkable materials. So.
Yeah, I can probably clarify the other comment. I, I was actually just talking about building amenities. So for a project like this, we would build in some common spaces, some support spaces, you know, that the residents would use. You see, we have the, you know, an idea of a pool in that area. So there'd be some other spaces in that for residents.
I'm assuming the idea is it's, it's an outdoor pool, so it's only partial year use?
Correct.
Okay. So that's my initial comments.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Bob. Joni?
Okay. I personally agree. I, first question, first thing is, I agree with Bob, the barn, that structure, historic, it's important. So if there's any way you can work that in. Second thing, I like the townhomes. I like that idea. However, is there any way you could flip-flop the buildings, so we don't have that huge building at Route 110? Rather maybe get the townhomes. And I know it's really tight. I mean, I'm kind of familiar with that site. So it's, I know it's very, very tight. But something just to think about if you're somehow incorporating the barn. So unlike Bob, I do have, I do have a big concern about four-stories at 37-and-a-half feet. It's, it's just massive. The, the affordable and I, I am very concerned about. I actually asked the Housing Director today for a copy of our current SHI, because of course, Westford's grown a lot, there's a lot more units. And the percentage we have today is based on the last five years, it's not based on the 2020 census. So I, too, am very worried about, I, I don't know, the one, the one I have, the SHI I have. So I asked Lisa for a current copy of the SHI.
I believe we're currently at about 11.97%, which is based on the 2020.
2020. That was, that was my guess, based on the, I was in the 11s, is what I was guessing. So adding 300 units does dilute it. You know, whether we can get some affordability, some workforce, something, something, is, it's really, really important to this community. And as the Chair of Affordable Housing, I obviously would really want affordables, but you know, I'm also reasonable and understand that workforce is also just as important. I assume this is all rental, correct?
Yes.
None of it is for sale? Okay.
Other questions?
Okay. And thank you for addressing the impervious versus pervious area, because I was trying to kind of figure it out. But awesome. That, that was great. I do really like the idea, if you can possibly get trails in that, in those wetlands, because they, again, I am somewhat familiar with the site. So it's, there is some nice property in there that, that obviously would be good for residents. I'm really happy about seeing the possibility of over 55. I think that's a big need in Westford. So if, if you can work that, that's great. But again, also, the affordable is very important.
Great. Thank you, Joni. Dylan?
Yeah. Thanks for the presentation. I like Option Two. I think Bob and Joni's comments about the barn are already on the record. So you know that you're going to want to see us have you do something with that. You know, the Building B, that's 37 feet off the road, I, I could be okay with it, but I think your work is going to be cut out for you there architecturally, to make it not look like a dominating, looming, ugly thing that's 37 feet back from the roadway. I think it's possible. Two weeks ago, I happened to be in Toronto for a business trip, and there's some very interesting architecture there. You probably are aware, I mean, that city is growing quite quickly in the core. And some of the architects are doing some very interesting things, design-wise, that make some of the buildings really look quite unique and interesting. With regard to the parking, I wonder if we're going to have two-four-story apartment buildings anyway, why we wouldn't consider some sort of a garage parking for some of the spaces, to consolidate the parking into a smaller footprint, get back some more pervious surface, and maybe do a three-story parking garage that's adjacent to one of the units. You get 300 of the parking spaces in there, and you only have about 100, 150 parking spaces outside of like a centralized garage situation. Would like to see included in your parking plan, thoughts around like electronic vehicle charging stations and things like that, which are, you know, standard modern amenities that any parking space this large should have. And have a little bit of a concern about both the wetland area and the vernal pool. If these are going to potentially be units that have children in them, how you're sort of providing a barrier that keeps kids from getting in there and playing. Like, I'm slightly concerned about the setback of the buildings in general, but more so that like neighborhood kids. Once it's a neighborhood and not a hotel, the kids are going to be playing in the area. So how do we do something to make sure that the kids aren't getting in there and being disruptive, when really, they're just kids being kids and having a good time, right? Love the idea of the walking trails through the wetlands. I would definitely encourage that. And to echo Bob's comment, not only would I want to see connectivity to Cornerstone, I keep hearing that, but you know, starting to think about sidewalks that tie in along 110 and also extend down toward Land Drive, to really start to begin to produce walking connectivity from Cornerstone. Further down 110 would be something I'd expect to see in a development of this size. So those are some preliminary thoughts.
Yep. There, there is a sort of planned widening of Littleton Road from Cornerstone, well, actually from the Regency to Powers Road. So that's already, without this project, that's, you know, a Mastot project, that would include sidewalks and mimic the bike lane that is, that is there. But I think that timeframe is 2029 to 2030.
Ah, okay.
You can't hold me to that, because it's Mastot.
And one of the concepts we had looked at with the Route 110 Master Plan, which kind of could marry the sidewalk connectivity with the, the walk through the wetlands, was we were looking at a concept of an elevated boardwalk, kind of a meandering boardwalk along the Littleton Road side of the wetlands. But that would provide that kind of a natural feel, kind of like you get through, going through the Everglades in Florida. But it would also provide for bike and pedestrian access along Littleton Road. So.
Sure.
Yep. Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. Yeah, I'm also, I prefer Layout Number Two, the mixture of the townhomes in there. The setback on Building B in that option, again, I could be okay with that if it's, depending on how it looks architecturally, just not a big, massive brick wall or something like that. And then, really, the main concern is the affordable. You know, as Jenny was here earlier, talking about, the state is making a big push here. They're not going to loosen that stuff up. And, you know, we've worked hard to get to where we are now. So that would be a concern for me. The main concern I would have is the affordable piece. But the only other piece I like, you like the amenities, I like the trail ideas and everything else. But the main thing for me would be the affordable.
Great. I don't have anything more to add. I think everybody's hit on things, points that I have. We'll ask the audience if they, if it's okay with you, if they have any questions. I do want to thank you again for coming in. This is very important for this new process for us as well. So we're definitely learning from it. If you have any questions or concerns, please come up, state your name and...
Hi. I'm Sue Thomas. I'm the Town Sustainability Coordinator, but I'm speaking as a resident tonight, seven-old homestead. And I want to thank you. It's exciting to have our first MBTA proposal and to have so many sustainability things incorporated.
Can you speak up a little bit? I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
The mic doesn't work. That's for the television.
Okay. And also to thank the board, because you covered a lot of what I hope to say. I do have a number of questions about, about the parking and the reuse. I didn't know if you could reuse the barn as a type of parking canopy in some way that preserves its structure, but still allows you to park in there. The board has gone further by just saying, preserve the structure. I'm fine with that, too. But a carport is something that, you know, also your investors might be willing to have there to attract residents to and get a good return on. The EV parking and charging is really important. From a trash perspective, we're not always good about thinking about the turning radius of our trucks. And I'm concerned about the trucking going all the way to the back and some of the tightness of the roads there, because recycling trucks in particular have a, have a big turning radius and they're long. And we have mandatory recycling, as you know. So that's a consideration for, for this layout, even more so than the previous one. I, I'm not exactly sure where the bus stop is, but I was thinking about the walking and the connectivity for also drivers dropping off. So I do really like the drop-off. I think you're going to get a lot of deliveries, as we're all seeing now. And the more you can minimize the interaction of those trucks with children and pedestrians and all of that. So the, the drop-off areas in the front, I think, in terms of traffic flow, will be really important. The, I'd love to see dark-skY lighting here for the benefit and health of those residents, because you can do that at the same cost as building normally and preserve the, the lighting in the parking lot for safety without having light everywhere. So I think that's really important to the quality of life in this development.
And a lot of that stuff will come out as the plans come forward, right? We have lighting plans and that type of thing. So this is more of a higher...
Okay. I'll try not to get into so many specifics. The only other thing is, I know you, I'm questioning if solar might make this more affordable for you. I know, I know not upfront, but in terms of making the units more affordable for the residents themselves, if you're putting in affordable housing. And finally, I don't know, you've done a lot of work much closer to Boston. And if you have anything with embodied carbon and incorporating low-carbon materials into your design, that would be much appreciated. And probably not a stressor for you financially. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Andrea Perrinas-Sweet. I'm a member of the Select Board, but I'm speaking as a resident tonight. With respect to the barn, that is a historical building that we've all worked very hard for probably about 35, 40 years to preserve. I guess, Jeff, my question to you is, if they were to demolish that, isn't that not subject to our demolition delay bylaw?
So that would very likely be subject to the demolition delay bylaw. So that's a six-month time period where the Historical Commission can hold a hearing, evaluate the uniqueness, which probably be a repeat of an earlier process. But they would, you know, have the ability to study, photograph, maybe make suggestions to find ways to incorporate it somehow. Or in an extreme case, if there's another location for it.
Right. I mean, one of the projects we have going on here in town right now is preserving an old barn structure that's now being turned into affordable and workforce housing. So that might be a use for the building to make it...
In some sort of housing.
I also want, one of my prior roles also is, while Joni is Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust Committee today, I was Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee 20 years ago. And we fought really, really hard for affordable housing in this community. And when we started 25 years ago, we had none. And I'm going to echo what all of the board members said. It is really important that you find some way to incorporate affordable housing into this project. Frankly, I think if you have to come before the Select Board for any of your permits or for feedback, you're going to hear that loud and clear from the Select Board. And I can almost say, you, you just, you need to find a way to do that. So I really want to echo what the board has said. And the other question I had, I know we're talking about over 55 housing, but are any of these units going to be handicapped accessible?
Yes.
Okay. I, I didn't, maybe you said that, and I just didn't hear it in the background.
I think, I forgot to say that, but...
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So just, just to be clear, so we obviously would meet the Massachusetts Access Board's requirements, but we typically go a step further. We make sure that the adaptable units need very little modification to be made accessible, because we understand that an accessible unit, it's not as though we're necessarily thinking about, oh, the whole project is going to go accessible. We're thinking about the resident that's in that building, where something happens in their life, and they need an accessible unit. They don't necessarily want to be disrupted and have to move to another part of the property. So things like the door, simple things like the door swings into the bathroom. Most of the times when you see a new construction, it swings into the bathroom. And then maintenance would have to come and change that door, flip it around, so it would swing out, to make sure that a person with mobility impairments could get in. So we start from that point. And, you know, that's just one of the things, but there are many others.
Great. I appreciate that. And then, just a couple of, of other points. I'm going to, as you look at this design and the parking in front, I mean, how many spaces are there? I mean, all I can picture is coming down Route 110, and all I'm going to see is a sea of cars and a sea of pavement. So as, as Bob... So as Bob Schaffer said, either you need to think about a way to buffer that, to pull it back from Littleton Road, or to play with your design a bit and see if you can move things around so there isn't that concentration of parking on Littleton Road. Because, you know, it will just, you'll just come down and all you'll see are cars. So, you know, I would ask you to take a look at that. And then, again, you know, and I know that I'm also a former member of the Planning Board. I should probably tell you that, too.
Andrea and I were on the Route 110 Master Plan Committee 25 years ago. I also chaired Historical Commission. So you're kind of catching us all on our pet topics.
Oh, I also will tell you, just so you know, the vernal pool that busts them to Cornerstone, we had big problems with that. So I don't know if it's moved since we built Cornerstone or what, but it was a, it was a real, it was a real challenge and it was a real point of contention with the Conservation Commission. So I'll just warn you about that. And then finally, and it sounds like you're doing that, just building best practices into sustainability, you know, energy efficiency. I think, you know, as we're, all of us are just so cognizant of that. And those are goals of our town. So asking that you continue to think about that as you move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
Evening.
Hi. I'm Paul Fossbender, 14 Texas Road. I'm looking at this sort of, from someone in the age group of being a potential resident and so forth, in the big house, looking to downsize and so forth. As I look at this plan, I feel really comfortable with the townhouses and the back building. I have a real issue with the Building B the way it is. As I see that, it looks like, if I'm in Building B, I've got traffic from 110. If I'm on the front side of the building going by all the time. If I'm on the side of the building that's going up and down on the driveway there, it looks like all the traffic for the site goes right next to the building. Is that true at that point?
That's correct.
It just seems to me like it might make more sense to put that at the other end of the parking lot so that I don't have to look at it out my front window if I'm in that area and so forth. And also, I agree with Joni and Bob on the having concerns about what that's going to look like from 110. If I'm up on a higher floor, do I have a porch or something like that? If I go out on the porch, am I looking down at traffic? And from another point of view, having concerns about the height, I also was on a group that worked on the town sign bylaw many years ago. And we learned a lot of things about the sizes of things and the distance from roads and things like that relating to signs. There's a much bigger problem the closer you are to the road because things look that much higher because the angle to the top of the building is higher. The current Regency building is set halfway back in the site. It's only three stories. And you don't see it when you're driving down 110. It's, you know, it's like a stealth building back there, basically. This is not going to be hiding in the woods by any stretch of the imagination. And I guess it was mentioned that there may be a plan for widening Littleton Road in the, before 2030. During the life of the building, how many more widenings of Littleton Road will be there? And will the road be right at the side of the building? I've traveled a lot in, with business and so forth. And we've seen some buildings, like even in Bedford along 225, there's a hotel building that currently is basically right on top of Route 225. You know, when you drive past it, there's, I'm not even sure there's a sidewalk there anymore.
I don't think there's a sidewalk there. It's on the road.
And it is a real eyesore and so forth. So how is this going to look in 20 or 30 years with the development that's going to go on along 110?
Can we follow up? I think you made a good comment about the buildings along the road and what their visual vistas are. One of the things that just occurred to me was, if you have the buildings aligned along the wetlands, the wetlands are actually probably some of the most bucolic parts of the site that you might want to take advantage of over on the west side. Because to the north, you've got 495. And to the south, you've got Littleton Road. Maybe if there's some way of orienting the buildings to have more of their backside looking over the west, that actually might be more attractive units. I know it creates challenges for traffic flow and parking, but it might take better advantage of what the site offers for natural features.
I know what I'd rather look at out my window.
That was a good point.
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, I can give you a little bit of insight as to why we ended up here. And I appreciate the comments. And we'll go back and look at things again. But we did have buildings that were more stretched along the wetlands edge and for those same reasons. What we found was, we got to a point where we couldn't actually, because of the tightness and the constraints that are there, we couldn't actually get fire access around the building. We just couldn't come up with a good plan. The parking access, we could kind of deal with. You bring somebody to one end of the building and they move through the building. Not ideal. You know, you're better off bringing them to the middle and letting people split. But we did feel like we could solve that. We couldn't solve, at least in our initial studies, the fire access around the building. And then we also felt that putting the townhomes in the area that was the quietest made the most sense from a planning perspective. So that's why we ended up here.
Makes sense. Jeff, did you have something?
Yeah, just a couple of things. So I did say widening of Littleton Road. There is a plan in place. But what I, and I unfortunately don't have the plans in front of me, but I do believe some of the widening refers to the physical improvements. It doesn't necessarily mean takings. I think in a lot of places, the right-of-way is actually pretty wide and there's room to accommodate that within the existing right-of-way. I can't say that is, you know, I haven't studied those plans recently. But I do think there are a number of areas where it doesn't necessarily mean the right-of-way changes. But the pavement might get wider within the right-of-way. Some other things that might pop up. And, you know, if things do proceed, I would certainly recommend you explore the possibility of like a non-binding discussion with the Conservation Commission as well. We've heard a lot of things about vernal pools and, you know, where the exist, you know, our commission always, may always look for opportunities to improve that buffer, even if there's existing pavement there. There also may be different setbacks or they may feel differently about a structure in proximity to, you know, a resource area than, say, pavement, particularly if there's existing pavement there now. And the other thing I want to mention is just that in some preliminary conversations, these folks did mention, so long as it was not in violation of fair housing laws, that if there were units or kinds of housing that made good sense for downsizing opportunities, that if we could somehow get a local preference to give some of our existing Westford folks who are looking to downsize, you know, a better shot at getting those opportunities. We would have to vet that with counsel and explore that. But as long as it's legal, they're open to that. So.
Great. Great. Do you have anything else, Mr. Fossbender?
Well, in terms of the visual impact, I don't suppose you'd be able to hit the density if the building along 110 was two stories or something like that and somehow you made up for it by putting more units somewhere else on the site or if you have any flexibility in that regard or if something shorter could be on the Littleton roadside. I've been to a number of places that have been along interstates and I guess buildings are soundproofed enough now that it's not that much of an issue. So can you have the four-story stuff actually further back on the site and have a, you know, reasonable accommodations back there? If that works at all. And from the signed by law learning and, you know, the bit about the visual angle, one of the comments was, if you're putting a sign on a flat surface or something like that, it can be much smaller if it's right next to the road. If it's way back, it has to be bigger and so forth. So in general, if you want to put the bigger things further back on the site, if at all possible.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Chris Glens, Texas Road. I second a lot of those comments. When I look at this plan, when I look at what's there now, and I know things can't stay the way they are now. When I, we took a drive around where the Regency is, there, where those independent units are, it was all, it's all trees. Beautiful, beautiful trees in that area. And there are trees throughout the whole property. What this particular plan does is take down all the trees and it makes everything concrete and pavement. I don't see much beautification. I don't see anything that if I were going to be...
We won't even have a landscape plan at this point. I'm sure as it develops, they're going to have a tree plan and a lighting plan and a landscape plan.
Probably. But we're usually told, come early and make your comments rather than...
No, no. And we welcome your comments. I'm not, I'm just explaining to you that that's, not we're at that point yet. So this is a high-level concept.
But basically, it looks like concrete and are going to replace things because it looks like all the trees are leveled in order to make room for the parking and the structures. And I don't know if anybody has feng shui-ed this kind of a look, but if I were, if I'm, you know, going to be downsizing and want to, you know, own a new place and I understand it's not affordable housing, so you're going to be paying a pretty price to come and rent these units, you know, driving into it, I don't, coming down Littleton Road, I don't like, this, I don't want this to be my home. It reminds me of driving down Commonwealth Avenue in Concord and you're looking, you're driving down the way where the Concord prison is. Right along the side of the road, you've got this concrete and there's this prison. And along Route 110, a four-story structure that close to the road and then you've got parking lot is huge. And then you drive in and you've got this huge building there. It's, there's nothing that's welcoming residents. There's nothing that says, come in. It's like, back off. I wouldn't want to live there and I don't want to be a resident elsewhere in the community having to drive past that right on the side of the road. So I like the idea of more housing, but this particular plan, I don't think... I find it a little bit repulsive as opposed to welcoming, but...
Jesus. Okay, thank you.
Emily Teller, 9 Texas Road. You can tell we have a contingent here. I also wanted to tell the applicants, you may, I mean, in just the side talk that's going on, there are people in the room with gray hair who've been participant in this community for a really long time. And we feel really passionate about all kinds of things, aesthetics and nature and things. And I think we also want to stay in this area. So I see this as a huge opportunity to do something wonderful for the town. And I just wanted to start by saying, I went to your website for Red Gate. I'm sorry, I didn't do Aerosmith. But, and they talk about some of the projects you're working on. And one is Gibson Point in Revere, which is basically 291 apartments. And they have an onsite restaurant with three meals a day, which is chef-driven with healthy food. And the residents and neighbors are there enjoying a holistic experience that nourishes their body, mind, and soul from dawn to dusk. They have an in-house electric shuttle that offers frequent and convenient rides for residents to and from the Wonderland Tea Stop and other key locations. We eventually are going to have connectivity to the Littleton train station. So that may or may not be a part of this. And also, from the video that I was directed to right away, I just wanted to say, as part of this consciousness for the board and you all, that you talk about it, real estate being a springboard for vitality and you're creating an ecosystem and improving lives through what you do. A thoughtful master planning, thoughtful development process and thoughtful occupancy of the great spaces that you create. You push the vision.
Just how that relates to this concept plan?
Well, I think, I'm excited about who is bringing it because I think they really are doing more than doing bricks and mortar. They're thinking about the occupants. They state that in their mission plan. They talk about cultivating authentic communities, which I think is huge. And you basically work for the occupiers, which I think is beyond investment and building. And I just think it's a, I'm excited that they're coming. So some of my questions after that. Sorry. I'm a senior, obviously, and I'm really, really interested in community living. I think, I know you have a branch in Raleigh, North Carolina, and my mother lived in Hendersonville. And there was a wonderful retirement home there called Carolina Village. So I've been exposed to that kind of nurturing community aspect where seniors can come together. And I think common spaces are really, really important. To me, that's going to be the number one place. If I move out of my house where I've lived for 42 years, we paid off our mortgage quite a while ago, so we're only paying taxes. So it's going to take a lot for me to even want to downsize, if that's the situation. But gathering spaces indoor and out are going to be really, really significant for me because I don't just want smaller space. I want to be able to talk to these people that I've been working with for 41 years in this town. And I would also like one community meal a day so that that also could be a time to come together. There's already a restaurant, obviously, if you're going to tear the building down, that's irrelevant. But there has been a restaurant on this site. So I think maybe doing some kind of community living in one of the two buildings would be pretty fabulous. And maybe have potentially planned and assisted living, potentially? I mean, could one of these buildings be apartments that are much smaller?
Respectfully, I think you're over-spending the concept that they're bringing to us.
Okay.
I think they're great ideas, but that's not what they're presenting to us at this point.
So I would wonder about covered parking. And that could be an opportunity for solar, right there over parking areas or the parking garage. The walking trails, fabulous that you're already thinking about that in the wetlands. And I think that's a great idea. I think attractive is also very important to those of us who've lived here for so long. We saw the Regency go up. It doesn't really look like a typical hotel. And I would hope that you wouldn't necessarily build buildings that basically have just patios or balconies sticking out from them. We really want something attractive in that space. Openable windows and trees. Trees are so important in Westford. They are such a part of sustainability. And the carbon that they're sequestering now, those big ones that Chris was talking about, that's pretty significant. And so putting, you know, ex-caliber trees back in there that will take a long time to grow, that's really an issue, too. Carbon, fossil fuel, you talk, I'd like to see zero carbon because that's what we're working on in Westford for the roadmap to 2050. We want carbon-free. So I'm glad you're doing all-electric. I would encourage you to do induction stoves and have heat pumps and mini splits. And EV charging stations completely, yes. Pool, it could be inside because this is New England. So we only have like four months. So I would encourage an indoor pool. And that would also be a gathering area. And then my last thing, again, is, I love all the green on the left, but the top three are affordable workforce and community housing. So I would encourage you to move in that area, too. Thank you very much for your patience.
Just have one quick comment after hearing some of the others. I want to really encourage you to keep up with this because I do find a lot with this plan that I really like. Having this parcel for an MBTA project that's right next to walking distance to Congress and so forth, that has the woods and stuff like that. I think there's so much potential here. And I hope you really dive in and give us something good.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience have anything? Anybody from the board have anything officially want to add?
I would like to offer some comments if I could.
Sure.
I think this is great input. And honestly, we would have loved to have brought that level of design to this meeting, right? I, we're obviously not...
We completely understand. Wouldn't expect that at this point.
Yes. But it's great input. We've taken great notes. That said, I think it, it sounds like the building that's currently there along Littleton Road is very important right now, is what we've heard. So we'll look at that. The other piece that I'm hearing is obviously the affordable housing is really important. Right now, these two options, this option with the townhomes has a $3.6 million premium to build, which is why we are requesting the waiver. And that's over the option one.
Excuse me, can you...[1782.71]
Excuse me, can you...
We can't hear you at all.
We can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's the way that the tears are set up.
I'm sorry. So I was explaining that this option with the townhomes, it costs, it has a construction premium of about $3.6 million. It's just the townhomes, and these are little gems, and it's just that much more costly. But we could consider an option where we look at some affordable or maybe workforce housing, but that would probably need to be in option one, because that's at least a less expensive option to help us offset the cost. Is that something that the board would be...
Well, so, you know, as politely as I possibly could say it, it doesn't matter to us what it costs you to build it. You know, we, I think you've heard what we're looking for, and we'd love to see what you can come up with.
I think you've heard pretty strongly that affordability is important to this board and to members of the community, so I think what you have to do, you know, on your end to make that a reality is up to you.
Agreed.
And looking at the barn, as I believe Andrea said, there, we do have another project in town where they are converting a historic structure into workforce housing, so workforce and affordable. And one of the components is a barn, so something, you know, I mean, they're, you know, they're pairing off with Habitat for Humanity. I mean, there are things that can be done in looking at that barn that maybe you can use it for affordables.
But I would encourage you to look at the design standards. I think they're still online for Route 110. In that kind of design, there's a lot of recommendations for design aesthetics that we like to see along 110. So unfortunately, you kind of picked a couple of topics that went against those aesthetics in terms of that large building right along 110 and eliminating the buffer, so...
Well, there's tremendous potential, certainly, tremendous, and you've got a good start.
Pay attention to that.
And we appreciate the level of effort that you've even given us options. I mean, it can be a great project.
All right.
I'll just throw something out there, just in talking about the aesthetics and this, I guess kind of the setback from Littleton Road, if there was something that they did that did have, you know, maybe a lower or a step-back kind of situation in terms of the design of the building on the, on Building B, but they needed to maybe go up a story. I know that's a special permit under the, under the bylaw to add the fifth story on the back building. Is that something the board would be open to consider?
Certainly, I think so, and I think we've already said we're willing to, you know, look at the setback, waiver, you know, and if they can put another story in the back building and make it look better up front, all the better.
You know, a parking deck over here, offset some of the park spaces here, save the house and the barn, move the height to the back of the site, so we kind of preserve the design aesthetic along 110. Those are all things that are very important.
So let me ask a dangerous question here now. So we're hearing affordable housing is huge, and we're hearing the historic structure is huge.
Yep.
There are limitations with any site and limitations, you know, financially. So is there, for consideration for the historic structure, is there consideration for some workforce housing instead of affordable or some, some split? Like, I'm trying to get a sense of, if you were to pick your top priorities, is it, you know, what should the message, the takeaway be for them? I mean, I know you want everything, but everything gets you no project now or in the relatively near future. And maybe that's, that's your call, but I'm just saying, if you're going to give direction to them, like what is truly most important? Is it getting some of everything, or if you had to prioritize?
Well, we'll start with Darren, what do you think? Great. Yeah, I think, I mean, the affordable has to be the most important thing to me, I think. I mean, obviously, we want to keep that house if we can, and even if we can relocate it somewhere in the site, but I think the main thing for me is the affordable or a combination of workforce and affordable.
Yeah, I mean, at the risk of being a contrarian, I don't know about the provenance of the barn, but I would prioritize affordable over, you know, the historic piece, and if the barn can be relocated, then relocate it, but, you know.
Yeah, I concur. Affordable is obviously, affordable or workforce is probably the highest priority.
Agree, and we just, we don't want to set ourselves too far back with our SHI column. So it's really critical to keep a positive...
Because it is 300 units proposed, so that's, you know, that's a fair number of units that would not have affordable ratio to that, so that would be, it's a big number.
I'd like to see the numbers, but it would significantly dilute that percentage.
So just, not speaking for the board, you know, you came back with some workforce, you came back with some affordable, something creative with that building, I think, I think it would work out. I think that we're reasonable, we know what we want, but no, we can't get everything, and if you appear to be working with us, we'll work with you, you know? All right? Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. Our last general business item is the review report recommendation for PB 2404 Firearms Bylaw. Jeff, do you want to bring us up to speed on that?
Mr. Chair, as you remember, you concluded your public hearing for the zoning bylaw amendment to regulate firearm businesses at your prior meeting, and we simply asked to provide you folks with a draft report and recommendation for your consideration. I will tell you that this draft is largely based off of the prior iteration from the prior attempt at a previous town meeting. However, we obviously removed a lot of the content that related towards limiting the number of special permits or the additional buffers that just don't come into play in this version. So a lot of the language looks familiar, but it's shorter because there's less stuff in this version.
I'll go to the board for thoughts, comments, questions. Bob? I don't have any, I mean, it was fairly comprehensive, and I think it summarized the changes.
No, I have anything, thank you.
I read it for the 50th time. I agree with you. Darren?
Nope, I have no new comments.
All right, so can I get a motion to, how do we want to do this, Jeff? Recommend the PB 2404 report and bylaw to town meeting?
Sure. Second? A motion?
Something about that we can vote for.
I'll allow a question. Go ahead, you can stand up and ask a question.
Cynthia King on Depot Street, and does this contain a special permit? Or has that been removed?
Still contains that they have to come before us to get special approval for their license.
Yes, a special permit is required.
A special permit?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to say that I disagree with that, and I would vote against it, and I think you're going to get a lot of pushback about that. I think you've already heard that. You know, when somebody goes for firearms license, they go to the chief?
You know, I can't allow you to continue, because the public hearing's been closed on this. So we closed at the last hearing, we had three hearings, meetings with the public hearing on this, and it's already been closed. So we're just going through, closing it out and finishing it to present to town meeting, and certainly you can discuss this at town meeting in front of the town, but I can't allow you to comment at this point.
This is the first one that I've been having to meet, so I'm sorry, but I'll be at town meeting.
Terrific, thank you.
I think the next step, though, besides us recommending it, is obviously it has to go probably to the select board, and so that would be a possibility where you might be able to speak before town meeting.
To the select board.
At the select board. From here, this is going to go to the select board, and they will, they are the ones who determine the warrant. And so we're recommending this be considered, and so now we will turn this over to the select board.
Okay, thank you.
And a motion in a second?
I'm sorry, I, in all that, who is the motion maker?
I seconded.
Who made the motion? Was it...
So we want to make the motion, I'll make the motion.
And you're still second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
All right, review of draft minutes, we have none. I didn't see any correspondence in the packet, other than what we received, an email. With that, do we have anything else? Mr. Morsett?
Mr. Chair.
Genowitz?
Nope, nothing.
All right, do I have a motion to... It's all moved, we move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.